Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be pledge to flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic of which stands one nation under indivisible, indivisible.
All right, we have had no executive session since our last meeting. So at this point, I'd like to open up board of communication from citizens. There's anyone in the audience or anyone on the Zoom call who would like to address the board? If you're on Zoom, please click the raise hand button and you will be recognized, anybody from the audience. All right, moving on then, we have our engineering reports, environmental engineer. Evening, Diane.
I have nothing to update on the reports, so if there's some questions, I can answer.
Any questions?
That was great. You didn't even have to walk out.
Civil engineering report, Tom.
Very quickly, I have two quick updates. First of all, tomorrow at 8:00 AM, we're going to meet with the contractor for the 80s drive. It's been off and Public Works, the manager and I will be out there. We'll start to see some pathing. Secondly, this afternoon, we met with the developer of the giant shopping center, J.C. Bar. We walked the entire sidewalk segment and you know, their concern was would they lose parking and I think we could work around. I think the project. Not really. We had a paint measure and we were able to sort of visualize the sidewalk areas. So we have a scheme, I think, that'll, that'll work pretty well and fit in there. But the walls are, some of the walls might be three or four feet high, but most of the area won't be very good high wall. We may not be a railing downside.
Questions? All right, then moving on to our consent agenda, we have items A through H. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed for a group discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through H. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have our bids, proposals, contracts and agreements. First one is authorization to submit Greenlight Go grant application to PennDOT for traffic signal improvements.
Mr. Chairman, this request is to make various improvements to the traffic signals along Market Street from Mills Street to North Elgin.
What's the amount that we're going for? It's like 400 and?
Closer to five, 569 and then a 20% match. I apologize. That would be the total project for 500,000 numbers in total project. So when we do a 20% match, it's 113,000 and then the balance is, it is 400.
Chairman, I move for authorization to submit this Greenlight Go grant application to PennDOT for traffic signal improvements in the amount as detailed by this gift.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor.
Aye.
Authorization to execute consolidated financial software and services agreement with Dallas Data Systems and not to exceed 145,375 dollars.
Mr. Chairman, over the past year plus Terry Hummel has been researching different software solutions for our financial software and a couple other modules. I and her both agree that this system is better than our current system and I fully support entering into this.
From what I read, it sounds like better, faster, cheaper.
Yes.
So when will this new software be implemented?
The earliest that they could get the financial side of it would be the beginning of October. However, I think it would be best to start January 1, 2024 with all lines. And Terry agrees.
Going to take it up. I want to get everything all lined up to transfer.
October is the time of year for finance or for all departments, budget season and all that. So I think January 1 for all.
October, we have money in the budget.
This is in the capital budget. That's 180,000 in capital.
So we paid this 145 this month and wait for?
None of those steps.
Okay, there are steps, so.
Yes.
And the finances part, we'll run some of our cash.
I have a motion.
So Chairman, I move to authorize Township Management to execute itself financial software and services agreement with Dallas Data Systems in amount not to exceed 145,375 dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Next, we have authorization to execute payroll services agreement with Paycom in an amount not to exceed 7,500.
Mr. Chairman, very similarly, previous item needs Sanchez Bowler over the last year or so have been researching different opportunities for us for payroll. And in meeting with her on this and meeting with them myself as well, I feel the best path for the township is to outsource our payroll services with Paycom as presented.
Questions for the manager?
What's the 7,500? Who is that?
That's the setup to get it all set up. And then after afterwards, it's a fee per payroll check.
Move to authorize executing a payroll services agreement with Paycom not to exceed 7,500.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have authorization to execute mobile data computer service agreement in the county of York for a period of April 1, 2023 through March 31, 2028. This is yours chief, right?
Yes.
This is all of the data services with the county.
Correct.
Which we currently have an agreement and then expires.
authorize executing the mobile data computer service agreement with the county of York for the period April 1, 2023 through March 31, 2028.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Next, we have subdivisions on land development. First is LD 2021-0003, Caliber Collision 2023.
Mr. Chairman, before Randall presents the plan, I would like to address the board. This plan comes to the board in a little unorthodox manner. My decision to put it on the agenda for tonight. John and Randall have been meeting, meeting with the developers for quite some time. I've been in a couple of those meetings. One of the hiccups that we were struggling on was the sidewalks along Whiteford Road and how to best handle that. And last week, when it was added to the agenda, it included a retaining wall, which would be in our roadway a sidewalk, five foot sidewalk is what we request, but no grass strip. And over the weekend, I thought to myself that we could do better than that. So earlier this week and as of this morning, we met with the developer a couple of different times to come up with a better plan to get the items that the township likes to see, and that is the grass strip, the five foot wide sidewalk, no retaining wall in our roadway. So that's why it comes to you today a little bit unorthodox and it was my decision to do so. If you are so inclined afterwards to make a motion on this in those agenda, there is a revised board of supervisor summary, which is pretty much the same summary, but Randall struck through the items that aren't needed based on what you'll be presented to. Go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to add from what the manager just said, I did modify my recommendation from what I previously had as well. So I want to pay attention to that as well, just knowing that it reads a little differently than what you originally received. But with that said, we do have site design concepts here representing a plan this evening. I believe we also have the developer represented here tonight as well as an attorney representing the developer as well. Speak to the plan a little bit more detail and what they have in mind to occur on the site on Whiteford Road. With that said, I think we have Mr. Minnick here and Mr. Engler from Site Design Concepts.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your time and the inclusion on the agenda. We were somewhat anxious to keep the project moving. It's a caliber collision site, a pretty prominent location here in the township. We received a special exception from the zoning hearing board that allowed us to move forward. It's been a very carefully thoughtful design plan. We were just kind of getting down to the final stages and the complicating factor here is, as you're aware, I think everybody topography associated with that site. The challenges that has represented to be able to come up with a good work of a plan with good visibility, good location, and there's been a lot of back and forth. And we appreciate the township staff working with and meeting with us via Zoom as recently as this morning to be able to make modification. I'm pleased to report, I think what we have been able to do is come up with a consensus approach. It has come, I'll say substantial cost to our developer and I don't mean that in legal fees in terms of topography and doing what we need to do to be able to get this to where you would like it to be. So we would appreciate the opportunity to have Tom Engel from Site Design explain just a little bit more about what we were doing. Some of the recent changes that have been made. Our ultimate goal would be to get your approval on this this evening. So without
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your opinion to be here this evening. Just a brief background, in case you're not aware of what we're doing here, it's about a two acre lot, 1.9 acre lot, six in the corner of Whiteford Road and memory lane extended. Proposal is for a 12,400 square foot auto body shop to be placed on that site is all mentioned, topography is an issue. It looks like a great site from the road and it's fairly flat up there. However, the only way to get access to that site is on the very north property line of the, of the site of memory lane. Same with that, we're also going to ask for a waiver of the slope of that driveway, which I think we want to prove to the engineer, so we can get onto that site. The big issue we deal with is, well, the, another issue we dealt with is there is a sun pipeline right away through the middle of the site. The pipe was, the pipeline is no longer there. It was cut on the property lines back in 2007 when there was another land development plan proposed for this site. And they cut the line then so we could get in there and do some geotechnical work, which we did. However, that, that, that right away. The end of the pipe is right here. The other end of the pipeline is right there. There's a 40 foot right away, right through the middle of the site. So we worked, we worked with Sun, Sun Pipeline and we're able to relocate that right away down across the property line and up the side until we hit this, hit this line again. So we were able to get that taken care of. The next thing we had to deal with, what everybody's probably aware of, is this steep embankment that PennDOT cut in when they, they built 30 back in probably 69 or 70. So that slope right now is not even one to one. It's, it's less than one to one. It's very steep. So trying to get a sidewalk along the road, along the roadway with the grass strip has proved very difficult. What we were able to come up with today and work with, originally we're coming in here, we're going to have a sidewalk on the edge of the shoulder and retaining wall behind that, no, no grass strip. And we were looking for a waiver for that. What we were able to work out today was so here's the center line. This line right here is the edge of the cartway. And the shoulder is back in here. We're actually going to be able to utilize that shoulder based on working with your engineer and the classification of this roadway and the lack of a need for that shoulder. Still provide a four foot shoulder. We're going to have a one foot reveal curb, one foot to protect the pedestrians of, from the vehicles coming around this turn, feeling like that one foot will, will help the cars, help pedestrians so that the cars will not be able to jump that curve as easily. We are providing a four foot grass strip as required and behind that the sidewalk. And now they'll retain all that is needed. So we'll be ready to base a little bit of grading, still get up into here. But at this point, we've, we've been able to provide the sidewalk, the curb and the grass strip for the ordinance. At the property line, right in this area, again, working with your staff and engineer, we are proposing a white line from the from the side, from the base of the curb back to a taper approximately 100 feet back where this existing shoulder will remain. And then as an added safety precaution, just outside of the cartway where this yellow line is, we're proposing one foot wide past the, past the white line build rubble strips typically to what you see on PennDOT roads. So if anybody is coming west on Whiteford and of course they're looking down, they're texting, they're doing something they shouldn't be doing and they're headed for the sidewalk, they'll, they'll, they'll feel the rubble strips, they'll hear the rubble strips and be able to maybe appropriate safety maneuver. We're very pleased with, with this solution. We had talked early on about, about working in the shoulder and so at this point we had no wall fighting sidewalk, four foot strip and curb. We did look at raising the sidewalk further for a request from staff. However, raising the sidewalk further really, and we were going to do that back behind the existing shoulder. But again, we ran into the trouble of hitting that, that almost vertical slope and it just wasn't feasible. I'll be glad to answer any questions about this sidewalk. We also have some other waivers that we're looking for, we can discuss if necessary.
And PennDOT would be fine without taking their toll.
It's just not a PennDOT road. That was a, that was a question. It wasn't PennDOT road when it was first created and it was turned back to the township when it was in the eighties.
It was re-identified to us.
Turnback.
John.
I believe that.
John found that, where it took him a while to find that, but yeah, it happened in 1980.
Okay.
And I believe on the, on the south side, here's the right away, this south right way of right, Whiteford. Where your right way ends, this land over here still has.
So this design between the curb and the cartway is very similar to what you see at the rail trail and on this race road. Please, Manchester Township, as you're approaching, I'm reading, there's a section that.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know if the.
The measurements may not be the same. I'm sure there's a shorter shoulder there.
I, I ride that trail a good bit. I don't know if there's a grass strip.
There is no grass strip.
There's a fence, right? Wooden fence, which slowed down, but they're still going to hit me.
But then there is that curb section between cartway and.
Correct.
Okay.
You see that email from Bob Samile, something about a water line?
Yeah, so that was the other issue. We looked at, so there is a 12, 12 inch water line that runs in the middle of the shoulder. That was the other issue with raising the raising the sidewalk and bringing that up just a little bit in the shoulder was now that water line was going to be under the raised sidewalk area. The way it's designed now, that water line is in the grass strip. So it might be a little bit difficult to get to, but they could certainly get to it.
Why is this written in needles?
It is a difficult site. I can tell you our experience in site design and this is the pool of developer we've worked with on the site. We had plans approved back in 2007, eight that were unfeasible to build with the car dealer. They wanted to knock that whole wall, that whole bank embankment down and that, there's a brief phase electric line up there that would have to be relocated, which just, just makes it unfeasible really for any developer for a lot this size to, to develop. We had a retail strip center that looked at it for very briefly. We were able to do a schematic plan and they walked away based on the requirements and constructions of costs. We had a many storage group that started the land development process and then they, they walked away from it just because of, again, construction costs. We have a developer here today who's been working at this and working at this. They're committed to this site caliber of developers here and he can talk a little bit more about it, but if you haven't seen a caliber around, once this one's built, you'll see them everywhere you go. There's 1,500 of them across the country. I believe they're in all 50 states. They run a very, very efficient operation. Not a lot of hot auto body shop or junk car are going to sit around. The only vehicles that come to this site are drivable when they get there. Every once in a while, somebody will tow one in there, but for the most part, these cars are drivable when they come in. They turn them around. Their goal is to turn them around in four or five days. And the longest they're on this site is, is seven days. They do take cars in their, in their business, not on this site. They do take cars that are undrivable, but they have, they have a reception hubs regionally around the country with those cars that aren't drivable. These guys are professionals, very efficient. Cars are going to be in and out, in and out. There won't be, there won't be a pile of
So we don't need to retain any more.
No, retain any more.
So then we don't have to worry about.
PennDOT, PennDOT built your retaining wall and yeah, no retaining wall. We don't need that, that issue. And we don't need a waiver for the, for the grass.
And Randall, you said that's reflected in the revise.
Yes, there's strike through for the.
Oh, just straight through.
Yeah, the waiver request as well as each for a comment under the condition of never approval. Number five is also struck out. It's number five on each the waiver.
Okay, I see.
There is one waiver we think had, we thought we had taken care of this. There's a stormwater comment. It's in the comment letter. What were your requirements for living right here?
I think it's eight to one, or five to one.
It's eight to one in this, in this section and we are at 16, I'm sorry.
Eight, seven to one.
Yeah, twelve to ones, both one, nine to one. We have provided a letter.
Geotechnical letter from John Rabbit, G. GTA. GTA. Indicating he didn't believe in a higher loading ratio on this site.
We also did not get any comments from the conservation district on their review of the loading ratios, the loading ratios have gone away with the EDP. They're looking at this other way. So as far as, as far as we're concerned, if there's a, we need a geotech to give us the permission and standing to do this, we don't have any problem with with DEP or the conservation district.
Just out of curiosity, is this a corporate, the young property or is the preferred developer this developer again for Caliber as a tenant? Oh, yeah, it's a Caliber is a corporate.
All of our sites are owned by, just basically local developers now. So we have a local developer that's developed this particular property, which I represent.
Has a developer built other Calibers?
Oh, this is the first one that this developer has built for us. Yes, we just started, all of our developers originally started from our Texas group where the company was originated. So now we have local developers in every state. So we have an included group in Connecticut, using Old Baker in Jersey and Victory New York and three corners in Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
So, sir, can I get your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Val Erin. F.I.C.H.E.R.A.
Thank you.
And I think our ass tonight, because number one, this is an extraordinarily difficult site. It really is almost remarkable what you have to deal with to get through issue after issue. To me, it's an excellent story about a developer collaborating with its technical professionals and municipality and its technical professionals to come up with a design and address this. The challenge has been that that's come at great delay and it's come at great expense and the developer really has been held back and very much been acting with the, the works of these issues. So because of that timing issue, I think the E.S. is before we see fit, we can get to the approval, the waiver tonight. If at all possible, because I think the goal really was to dig in, it was anxious for a while. They are beautiful sites as these things go. They're springing up everywhere. They have a very nice business model, very nice addition of the tax base here in the township and we'll clean up that area up there. I think it'll work very nicely when it's done. But you know, the timing, frankly, the challenges with the site were really under some pressure to keep it going.
Tom, could I go back? If I'm reading the traffic sheet, it looks like the loading ratios are still conditions. You're asking for waivers. So we need a waiver for that. It's a requirement.
Did that get turned in? That waiver. Do we have that in wording?
The answer is no.
I think we have discussed it throughout the project with, with the engineer and provided, provided with the letter. I'll, I'll all the sort of that, you said, I've had it taken care of and didn't realize we needed a formal. I thought that would get to comment and we need a formal request for that. Well, we could have that. We got this drawn down and since this morning, I can, I can have you a written request on how this being covered. If you let me out of here soon.
Is that good enough?
To the extent that he's made the formal, but it would be in writing. Let's try.
Do you have his request?
I will say yes.
Okay, so the formal request, I guess, is now, will be in the minutes. So I guess then the mechanics of this would be we would not be approving conditions six, seven. Six and seven. Or we would have had a waiver. Which we have the loading ratios. And Congress has a restake waiver.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be our waiver eight.
Yeah, I apologize, monitor, monitor letter. So I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, we, we we know. Plan summary. You know, the plan summary for the board of supervisors was amended today. So on that, even on your previous ones, you're really not done. I think it's still number seven and eight. I didn't change that numbering scheme or number sequence. So it would be six and seven, not six, not seven, six and seven. You know, there's maximum loading, total loading ratios.
That's. There is a.
On the list of permission.
Just change six and seven to waiver requests.
In the specific section section of that waiver requested, section two eighty one dash fifteen. And speed three B.
Did you say C?
C is in car. Number three, B, and number one.
And that would be this way section of those way.
Waiver of the loading ratio.
Waiver of the loading.
It means remove six and seven from conditions and having to wait.
And you need a waiver of those.
Six and seven go away altogether.
Yeah, six and those would be the specific conditions. And if we're waiting loading ratio, then I'll put this section that John referenced. Ask it for the entire site.
Yeah. But one waiver covers it, right? That's why I'm and the waiver is.
So I do have one technical question out of curiosity. Maybe this is Charlie question or Paul question, but when I look at the site plan and I see where the pins are identified. And I see that's the end of the track. Then I see you're the next door neighbor and where the end of their track. And I see this met ed easement in between. And I understand that neither you nor your next door neighbor own. And this is looking to the north of the site.
I think that's where you were talking about the buffer yard, right?
Yeah, so no, actually, so yeah, scroll up there a little bit. So what happens is this strip is actually owned by the by the mall, the the Target Mall. Okay.
Coles and and Park Target.
And and within that.
And that's how they bring in their powers.
Yeah, and so within that strip is a minute right away.
They'll relate each other.
So we have taxes on this?
Yeah, all one part of that that Coles, if you look at the Coles tax map, it's either. Fingers that can out memory landing.
Okay, all right.
And that's our neighbor to the north. So I think the buffer yard that we're talking about, if you could scroll back down, please. It doesn't doesn't show real long here, but you can see this, there's a. There's a buffer right there and we're gonna plant north of there, but right. We're gonna plant right in here, but we can't plant down this way because we're in that right away with the sun pipeline. So in this area right here, we're not planting. We can't. Not allowed to based on their right away, but from here. From here up, when that right away stops, from here up, we're planting the buffer.
Explains why such a prominent site in this township is remaining under developers.
Well, I command you to develop first team. Something that would need to adapt that area, rebuild that area better use.
Well, I credit your staff to this, sir. I mean, I think it was a great collaboration in emphasizing public safety issues. Soliciting some things that you could do to help with public safety issues. Again, I think it's a very nice story of working together on something very tough. But I'm lacking some real.
Can we change six in modification to not provide a buffer yard? Within the existing forty foot wide rather than due to, because it doesn't, we're not. Taking away the entire buffer just in the.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to plan number L D twenty twenty one dash oh 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 three. I move for the approval of the following waiver. And modifications. Section two eighty nine dash ten preliminary plan, section two eighty nine thirteen A plan sheet scale, section two eighty nine twenty six. Concrete monuments, section two eighty nine dash thirty one dot A. Concrete curving installation with an eight inch reveal to parking lots. Section two eighty nine dash thirty five B to a buffer yard between commercial and residential use. As amended to state a modification request to not provide a buffer yard. Within the existing forty foot wide, no good gas utility easement along the common property. Section two eighty nine forty one dot J for driveway slope not exceed five percent. Twenty five feet of right away and not exceed twelve percent for remainder driveway. And waiver number eight. Wait, section two eighty nine, I'm sorry, two eighty one fifteen C three B. Waiver of. Maximal total load ratio, maximal total load ratio. I did mention seven. As a separate statement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I would like to just call out the the curving being six inches. Actually appreciate that. I don't like banging my car doors on on curves that are too tall. And I I mentioned to a manager that we ought to be taking a look at that and only require it where we actually have to protect some. I agree, so. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, relative to plan number L D twenty twenty one dash oh 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 three. I move for approval, subject to following conditions. Section two eighty nine dash ten dot five C. This is a copy from York County Conservation District. Letters, section two eighty nine twelve C guarantee. Section two eighty nine sixteen A. Now highlights those areas which resist new slopes exceeding fifteen percent. Section two eighty nine dash thirty five E, one through three site maintenance and guarantee. Section two eighty nine. How do I? Now move down to mission eight, maintain the gutter flow from the proposed access drive engines for the existence stream.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you again.
There's the easy button.
Roll the valve. Yeah, we do want there are.
Next, we have. L D twenty twenty two dash zero 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 six, Five Guys.
This particular land development plan, the board of supervisors have seen as a conditional use. Many months ago, you will, it's a redevelopment of the existing Five Guys restaurant on eleven twenty five Haynes Road. It's as John characterizes, a scraping rebuild, if you will. And we have Mr. William Lada representing the project of the D P D group. And you've spoken to him in the past as well, which is a conditional use process. Took a little while to get here. We were. Spent additional time at the planning commission to try to get it to this point. There was something that we had to work through with the planning commission and with staff. But I'm happy to say that we are here today with this plan and. I think the plan's in a pretty good spot as of today and I'm turning it over to Mr. Just to Mr. Lada to speak in more, a little bit more detail in the process that we've gotten. And gone through to get to this point with that sentence, Mr. Lada. Can you hear me?
Yeah, barely. We increase.
Ours is up as much as it can be.
Okay. Let's see if I can change. Change to your microphone. That would be great.
What about now? Better?
Good, that's good.
Okay, yeah, like Mr. Hellman said, we've been through quite a bit with this site. It's a scrape and rebuild of the existing Five Guys. So we can build a new building that's up to current code and brand standards. We worked through several things with staff surrounding the the stormwater. Plan and a couple of modifications such as making the curbs six inches, kind of like y'all discussed on that last project. As well as allowing the plans to be. Plotted at at a one to twenty scale, which due to the small site is really helpful for everybody. On the plans, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have. With the site.
Yeah, Mr. Ladd, did you want to share a screen with the the picture of the plan?
Yeah, I can do that. One second.
If you would, please. Yes, thank you.
Share. You all see my screen? Let's get to the site plan. Yeah, here we are. This is a. The plan of the proposed site. It's basically construction, constructing the new building. Kind of reutilizing a lot of the parking around it. As y'all saw in the conditional use, we we got the waiver to provide parking slightly in front of the building, just so we could get enough parking spaces. And we think it's turned into a really good site.
So maybe this is John's question. I see here some conditions of approval about natural surface drainage being inadequate. And design facilities, it's type of geog- geology. Are these typical?
They are, they've now added stormwater to the site we're comfortable with. One of the things that was, look at the planning commission, I'm sorry, thank you. When when the planning commission looked at this initially, there there. We've often required developers scrape and rebuild to manage stormwater for the entire site. Their challenge was that pavement that you see out there is going to be recycled and reused. Or they're just gonna overlay that pavement. They're keeping that ratings there. So we were initially thinking, all right, well, why can't you put stormwater underneath? The parking area, but they're they're not ripping that parking area up. They're gonna maintain it. They're gonna recover a lot of it, but they're gonna. Keep that. Of a storage pipe alongside of the restaurant. And they are managing stormwater for the buildings, which is the building and the. And they're actually, one of the arguments they were making was we're reducing imperiums, which they are. But now they're managing stormwater for the building and. That's where the at the the land timing was because. Initially, the planning commission was hoping to honor it with how we do every other plans, but the fact that they're not. Ripping out any of that parking lot, that created a challenge. If you recall, the sidewalks out along Haynes Road were recently placed by Pendant. And our recommendation and that we vote by the board on the conditional use was. No need to rip all that out and start over. So they are. The driveways will remain, parking lot effectively remains, the store is going away, they're gonna put that. Area out front for the conditional use, that common area. And and so we worked through those things and I think they have a satisfactory plan. There may be a couple of eyes to be dotted and keys prompt, but in general, I think they're they're in pretty good shape.
So we would not need those two conditions?
If they're on that list, I would prefer to leave them there and make sure we've got that covered, but. The last conversation, the last review we did, I thought we were. We're in pretty good shape. I know that they routed the water and provided that to them. I don't want to say, I don't have their whole file here, but I would prefer to err on the side of leaving that in a.
It's not a problem leaving the condition that covered.
No, it was done, so.
So out of curiosity, will the, maybe this is for Mr. Lada, will the downsides connect into this storm?
Yeah.
That's correct.
And you have no problem with the conditions here as presented?
No, we we are okay with all the conditions. We think we can work through them with city staff to get them resolved.
I I think this is a similar subject. I I'm. I'm a little confused by the second condition on the list that I'm looking at. Where it says whenever the evidence available to the board of supervisors indicates. And then it goes on.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about knowing, you know?
I mean, what does that mean?
It means if their stormwater system fails, I guess we can go back in and install one that works. So is that a good language explanation, Mr. Engineer?
I believe so. I I think that this system does infiltrate, but they have a pretty small workforce. On the far end that leaks that water out. It's gotta deep water in seventy two hours is one of the requirements.
I I guess. Hopefully Charlie Rouse thinks that's enforceable one way or another. I also, on that that same sentence, it refers to the subdivider. I assume that's a typo.
Yeah, land developer. Yes, sir.
And is it actually a typo or is it just misstated in the ordinance?
Looking at the definition of subdivider and that's a defined thing, the person who divides the land. So I I think it could be a typo. It could be a developer opposed to subdivider. And the ordinance might say subdivider, but they interchange those words as you get through.
It also says down here under the description that to the township's knowledge, no stormwater management system. Has been incorporated for this site, which is not true.
Originally, that that was the case. Originally, they had no stormwater.
If this one cannot be. And this requirement cannot be. So John, is this one required?
Yes, the stormwater. Our ordinance, our ordinance, they still need, our ordinance requires them to take all the impervious area and manage it as if it were metal. They are not doing that, but they have provided some stormwater management by explaining to the building.
See, and I guess that's kind of where I'm coming up on this particular condition of the developer's plans. By my, they have met.
Well, we don't, we don't really know that.
Yeah, that's true. If there's a sense of airstorm, that's why we have to catch on.
So, and. Yeah, I, I think this is. Fine the way it is.
I would leave the condition of this, if Mr. Latta is, is comfortable with the condition, we'll work through that, that rule.
Yeah, we're comfortable with it. We, like we said, that's one of the things we worked through for quite a bit during the planning commission. We provided our stormwater calculations for the system that you see on the screen. We're, we're okay with us.
As you prepare well, relative to land development plan 2022-0006, I move for approval of the following issues and waivers. Set in section 28913, plan scale and section 28931.8 installation of eight inch current six inches.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, relative to LD 2022-0006, I move for approval subject to the following conditions, section 289-26.8, section 289-30, section 289-10J, section 281.15.B1G, section 281-16.D1F, and section 281-16.D4A.
Say. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
I appreciate it. Thank y'all very much. And thank you for the staff for working through this diligently.
Right now we have communication from supervisors. Anybody have anything?
I, I have. Sorry, I heard somebody else talking.
Go ahead, Don.
I, I think, I thought it was, I'm myself echoing, sorry. Just an observation. I got my membership application for the UPMC Life Team in the mail recently for ambulance service. And I, I just wonder if the contracts that we have that have been gone through a number of different iterations and hands and that whole area has changed quite a bit, if that's something that we need to make sure is still working to the benefit of Springersbury residents. Good, I think the last time we actually had a contract, it was with White Rose, I guess, which was then acquired and.
I thought we carried those contracts over and we were careful to make sure that they would keep that same program. Is it not the same, Don?
I, I'm not sure. So I think it's just, you know, I don't, I don't know. I just think it'd be worthwhile for someone to take a look, maybe.
Lori's nodding her head, she's going to look. Might not do anything about it.
Nothing like that before.
And I swear that Don and I didn't orchestrate this, but I feedback actually for things to ambulance services as well. At a recent YALFOR meeting, we were having conversations about the staffing there. And I was asking a line of questions that revolved around the fact that YALFOR is still providing EMS services in the township despite the fact that I outsourced that years ago with the ambulance service. And the feedback that I got, which I'd like to share tonight, is that our ambulance service may not be performing up to the standards we set for the sign-up agreements. So another reason to take a look at that, I don't know if it's a lot of reports, but the feedback I got is that our ambulance service is not performing to levels we would expect. Would you give that feedback? And what EMS services are we providing as a township? My understanding is that if there is a call for ambulance service, we dispatch our firefighters because oftentimes they arrive before the, and are qualified to administer the first use, so to speak.
He popped, does have his hand raised if you're.
Hey, chief. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, need, need to clarify that information because it's not, 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 not a hundred percent accurate. The EMS provision of service in Springersbury by the fire department is relatively unchanged since I'm going to say two thou, at least 2008. And that is that the fire department responds to medical calls whenever the, the primary ambulance is not available. So when the ambulances are busy, that's when the fire department responds and it only responds on priority one calls. So we're not, we're not running every single ambulance call in the township. We're running priority one calls when there's not an ambulance in that first due area available immediately. And the message that I conveyed was not that the ambulance service was not living up to its obligation, but there's two rigs in service every day. The demand on the ambulance services in this entire county is phenomenal. And there are times when an ambulance from outside the area has to cover because the first two ambulances are already committed. So Life Team is living up, as far as I'm concerned, Life Team is living up to its obligation to the township. And I think to answer Mr. Bishop's question, the contract was renewed, if I'm not mistaken, in 2020 for five years with Life Team. And, and they are providing the same subscription service that, that White Rose provided and prior to White Rose, that the Springersbury Ambulance Club provided. But your service is actually better now because you actually have two units in service than when Springersbury was providing the service itself. So I just wanted to make sure that, that, that the information was clear.
Just a quick question, chief, under that agreement, are they both, are they both ALS?
They are. One is a 24-hour unit, staffed 24/7. The other unit is staffed for peak hours, 12 hours a day.
Thank you.
The difference now is we used to have just the.
Yeah.
And had to call. ALS for, now we have two ALS, so we have twice as much, well, what, one and a, one and a half times as much, but at a higher level.
Correct, Mr. Swamley. And also with Life Team being the, you know, the, the biggest provider of EMS in York County, one of the things they are able to do is when the call volume in any one particular area is increased, they are able to rotate units from elsewhere in the organization towards where the heaviest volume is so they can reduce response times and, and get ambulances there quicker. But again, the fire department is, we're, we're not picking up their slack. We're doing what we've done for the last 14 years, probably, to serve the citizens and that's get first response. And that's all we're doing is first response EMS, getting trained people to the residence as soon as we can when there's, we know there's going to be a delay.
Do we have any metrics on how often that occurs?
I know how many call, I, I don't have that information at hand, but I, I can.
I know, I.
Yeah, I, I can tell, I can tell you how many times. I can tell you how many times here we provide EMS to the different areas.
It may be interesting to see if that is off hours or if it's prime time. And we may have to take a look at what it would take to either get third ambulance during prime hours or have two ambulances 24 hours in the future.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree. The volume models that are in the metro area of York County is, is truly overtaxing everybody, not just one, one entity. You know, and, and there's, you have the call volume and then you have the overload at the hospitals that ends up keeping those units out of service longer until they can transfer patients. The whole system, to be honest, needs revamped. The good news is we just had a new EMS director for the state named today who just happens to be our medical director. And he's very, very well-versed in, in the whole pre-hospital setting. So we do look for some changes in that regard.
Yeah, I'd be really interested to see the metrics to, to see how they stack up and, and what that looks like. And if it's just occasionally, that's one thing. If it's on a continual basis every single day, every single week.
Sure.
We need to take another look.
Sure, glad to.
This is a, a different subject, but kind of related, just to report to the board. They, you know, at, at, at one of the recent YALFOR Commission meetings where they heard the presentation from the personnel consultant they hired, that person spoke very favorably about the effectiveness of fire departments taking over EMS services and how successful they were at, at his company, I think in Cincinnati or wherever it was.
Interesting. Anybody else have anything? I'll close out then. I was invited to WCJ Wire. I talked to Charlie a little bit about earlier. They're doing a development right now, adding space to increase their manufacturing facility. Like I, that image. So I, I did a tour of the facilities and we had said that it was, at least a portion of it was a retail operation because it's wire-in, wire-out. At least I think that's how the, the hearing officer ended up ruling. Very, very simplistic view. One of their neighbors takes in cardboard, turns it into corrugated cardboard, sends it out, cardboard in, cardboard out, and yet they're a manufacturer, so. And there are, there are other manufacturers in the area that take in a product that goes out looking like it hasn't been altered, but is substantially altered. So if you understand anything about metallurgy, low-carbon steel is a, a very soft metal. It comes in in huge wires, probably four feet diameter, five feet high, thousands of pounds. That gets unwound and drawn through dies to stretch it. What stretching it does is it work hardens the metal. It changes the grain structure so that the grains align. It changes the properties of the material so that it can be used for other things. So that happens over a series of dies as it's being drawn out. And then the process is to galvanize coat the wire so that it does not rust. And then it is finished sized for the particular application that it is ultimately headed to do, whether it's staples or wire-bound notebooks or things like that. The finished product can be used for a number of different things, but it is a product that is created, it is not wire-in, wire-out as, as maybe the terminology might have been used. It is a very specific manufacturing process that alters the properties of the metal. So I would suggest that if we have any opportunity to weigh in on the situation, if the, if the manufacturer should decide to appeal the ruling that was there. I'm not sure how we exactly accomplish it, but if, if we can make sure that, that there's an understanding of the process, what, and what the definition of manufacturing is, I, I think we should. To call it a retail operation, you don't, you don't go in and buy this from them like you would go to Michaelson buy, buy a small spool of floor wire. It's not the same thing at all. So they're being charged retail tax on a portion of their business that does not look at all like a retail operation.
For how long?
How long since the law? Been going on a number of weeks and I, I forget.
This is the business privilege.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it was kind of the same. Same deal, same difference, same sign.
It would be merchant till tax on retail, so. It's a privilege, Jim.
My, my understanding. Go ahead, Charlie.
No, I said, I was going to say that there's common sense and there is the law.
This isn't even, this isn't a law we can change, right?
Well, the problem is, if you're citing case law that doesn't understand the technology and you say that, say in the textile industry, something that they did that doesn't alter the properties of, of the material is a retail operation, well, this is altering properties of material. If you say that it's, I mean, it, it's hard to grab some of those examples and understand how they apply to this particular situation. And understanding that somebody might not be an engineer or might not understand the implications of the manufacturing process that this particular product is undergoing, could say this looks the same as something else when it, when in fact there is no resemblance between the two. So I would say that it has more to do with interpretation than it has to do with law. I mean, interpretation of law rather than the law being hard and fast that there is a specific definition that applies to everything.
To that point, I think we had this very similar situation a few years ago. And some of us went to tour that facility and.
HR department.
And it came down to, yeah, how was it being interpreted? I know we negotiated with them and everybody seemed satisfied.
Yeah, and I thought that the decision there was that we could decide whether we're going to call part of it manufacturing or not. And, and what it turned out to be is one side of the house, they brought in big boxes of prepackaged waste. They repackaged them in smaller boxes and sold those, and we called that a retail operation. The other side was they brought in drums of a fluid. And they. Pumped that into syringes and then packaged the syringes and sold it. It's just. Breaking up. The the product into a smaller dispensable unit and reselling it, we call that manufacturing. So that's why I'm saying interpretation is very important. And if you don't understand the process, you could say wire in, wire out, not knowing that the wire in is not equivalent to wire out. It is very dramatically altered. I mean, another example would be if you got sheet metal in, folded it up. Punch a couple of holes in it, send it back out, you call that manufacturing. But it's sheet metal in, sheet metal out. So if you make it simple enough. It sounds. Like it's a retail operation. If you go into what the process is. And what the end product is and how it's different, it's not just wire. It is a work hardened wire that has been galvanized for a specific purpose. So that is not. I mean, you couldn't take the wire off the truck. And use it for the intended purpose of the other end. Wire off the truck has to be worked, it has to be manufactured into. It has a value added operation to make it functional. In the in the end use intended for that product. So.
Well, you know, the board, you know. All adds to what I mean, the way this works is that. Tax Bureau. Will do an audit. They will do an initial determination as to whether or not something falls within business privilege tax. The. The owner can appeal. And and then the. Tax Bureau will write an opinion. They can appeal that then to our hearing office. And then we then there's a decision. Now they can feel that before the county believes. Shoot, I think they did that. That's. I I don't recall. I know they did.
Yeah, they got some small amount of relief.
Right.
But.
So, but this is.
They asked me if this reason toward the juice.
Well, yeah, and this is business privilege tax, which is the largest tax collected. So. Tax. Your guidance tax bureau. And. My job.
Is protected. All right, I'm watching an engineer and I'm being too practical.
So. You know, and this is all. You know, you read the case law. And you know, you get very, it gets you get very confused easily because it's like. Okay, they call this something, they call this manufacturing, but they call this retail. And 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 sometimes you it's like, how do they make that? So sometimes it is like a foot of the form.
Yeah, because the the. Two or three cases that were used to determine that this was retail. Had no bearing on the type of. Product that this was, so that's why I said. Obviously, somebody. Is not understanding and is using an interpretation that that to me. Doesn't appear to make sense in this case.
So what for this word supervisors?
Actually, in this particular case, is it? I I it's up to, I mean.
And I'm not sure they're even gonna appeal it. It's just I wanted to bring it forward. Because they brought me in. To show me what the operation was. They're very proud of the vision that they're gonna put in. They want to remain in township. You know, they're putting money into the facility. Which is.
Where we have a manufacturing base.
Which is an employer of jobs that. It's good for our tax base also, so.
So what are our options as if they don't do anything, we have no option, is that right?
But if they appeal it. Is there something?
Well, I don't know because I don't know. It's already been a decision made, so I don't know if it's stuck with it unless the board. Directed the work Adams Tax Bureau to exempt it, exempt.
And is there case law to support that action or we have some legal authority to do that?
Well, it's your tax, so. You wanna. Direct. Tax Bureau not to collect tax, I think that's your call. But then I think you gotta be careful because what of what doors are you open? So I mean, if everything's manufacturing, your business, your tax is gonna weigh down, right? So you gotta. You gotta be careful.
Right.
And sometimes you just do it on a case by case basis.
And that's what we did with the other.
Right.
Have a list of all. Businesses identified as manufacturing or maybe subject to the merchant.
I don't know. I don't know that we break question.
And you can probably identify them by next code.
I mean, the tax bureau can tell you who's paying the tax.
And cross reference your next good list.
I mean, they're not gonna have names of manufacturers, but they're not paying. I think.
Except for this day.
I I don't know. I mean, maybe they do. I think you have to you have to.
They would have a list of all the tax, all the entities that pay the market. The disturbance tax and we would be able to cross reference that list that I would.
A plant manager made a comment that with the new lines being brought in. They have. Capability to anneal the wire and just heating it up to. A temperature that again alters the properties of the wire and apparently. That there's lots of case law that that is a manufacturing.
Yeah, but on the other hand, Seabound Top tried that with the snowmaking. Took water, changed the property. The ice to snow. That wasn't manufacturing. Still water. Different form.
It reverts to water when done. This this does not revert to you just have your.
But it's still the same.
Well.
As same.
Same with sheet metal that you would bend in the shape.
Metal in, metal out. A dress manufacturer is. So where I where I'm thinking here is you're right, you don't want to open a door and. Rate this. Kind of mayhem where. All kinds of. From the exemption, but. Is there a strategic advantage where our manufacturing, you know, to make sure that. That we're not charging. And I'd say we start with this. See.
Well, if somebody thinks that the manufacturing and they're giving tax. It's up to them. But they would. They would appeal. Or challenge. And and it has happened. I mean, the. Is the medical, the dentals, my company also accused that challenged. They were making. Dental products. Again, some of it. And it was manufacturing, but then it was the same thing. They were like bringing in toothbrush and maybe putting their name on. But still toothbrush, but then there were some other things that they were actually combining. Materials and making some. Factory reached a compromise with them, so.
The the wire company is actually. Putting galvanizing on the wire, they're actually adding the water. And it is. Yeah. So they're having consequences together.
I just thought I don't remember what. The various case law set. Very. Esoteric. Area.
All right, so we get an engineer to go out and discern decide whether it's manufacturing process or retail process.
That or just collect the tax and wait for somebody to complain.
I thought this guy. It was pretty funny. He said that he was so beside himself when they said that it's it's just wire.
I remember he was the guy that just walked out. He just walked out.
He he was the typical engineer that understands his business really well, but can't talk to people. At the same level that they you with each other. So when somebody told him. That his product was just. Putting wire from one school on to another. Totally missed. All of the complexities that go on and what has to happen in order for that to actually work. So. Yeah, I would I could see him walking out.
And just to finish up on that, I'll get that with Mark, but. At one point, the board passed a resolution appointing a tax hearing officer who is Ned Stankowski. Unfortunately, Ned passed away. This past year, so. We're gonna have to. Find somebody else to be tax hearing. Ed was the CPA and attorney. So we I know Al Timpco of York area, he likes to use. His name is Jennifer something, but I think she was the hearing officer for wire. But she's not in, she's not local, so I'm gonna have to get together with Mark and see. They don't come up that often. It was just that in the past couple of years, we just had two fairly big cases that.
So I was gonna tell you, Charlie, that you're charging us entirely too much. You know why? You have a dictionary in your office.
Yes.
And you send us written documents. It's words in, words out. Where where's the value in that?
No, you're telling me I don't have to pay. I was paying the bits of privilege taxes, so you're telling me I should appeal.
No, I'm saying that.
Tell normie.
Words in, words out.
Words in, words out.
I'm gonna get a T-shirt.
I think I can have somebody make one of those up for you.
Yes, I know.
All right. Anything else, Charlie? I guess.
I'm done.
Managers report.
I do not have anything to add in my report.
Questions? Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. I think this is what you were talking about.
No, this was for your, I think you're.
You're right. Want to do that now?
Sure.
Why don't you just pull the chair up here and and. You can check. Sound good. Yeah, if you if you come close to the box and see.
I done.
I vote I.
So we understand that you're you're looking to. Join the township in some capacity, that'll help.
If if I can, I would love it, yeah.
Be great. And I think Mark said that you originally were talking about planning commission. And he told you that we currently have an alternate opening on the zoning hearing.
He did, yeah. Yeah, I think all of me, I I'd love to do planning commission if there's ever opening there, but in the interim, if you have an opening in zoning hearing.
We need to have that discussion too, because I just happen to have a. Discussion with one of the current. Planning commission members recently. And that that may happen. Can you give us a little bit of an understanding of your background?
Sure, I did you get the did you go get my resume? So. So I'm a civil engineer, I'd say grad. I've been working, really doing John's job. For. Multiple municipalities in Central PA. I I worked for two, which is over in Lancaster. But I've lived here in the township. We built a house here in nineteen ninety-four in Central Woods. I grew up in Fledgerville. So this is the area I'm familiar with and. I worked out of the area but have lived there the whole time, so but. I'm very familiar with, I've done hundreds of subdivision reviews. I I work with tiny commissions, I've worked with board supervisors. It's it's what I've done for years and because of all the night meetings that come along with that. I haven't really had the ability to volunteer township, so. Now that I'm retired and a little forgetful of my time now, I apologize for all your time because I know it's valuable. I I'm interested in participating.
Great.
Brian, I just, did you have the experience? As an engineer going before zoning hearing boards?
I have not gone before zoning hearing. It's interesting. I've sent many projects to zoning hearing boards over here and and your zoning hearing board meeting. Earlier, I guess earlier this month was the first one I've actually attended in forty years, so. But no, I have not.
Tom, comments?
I I'll just comment that, you know, I've known Brian for many years and I can't think of a better candidate to. Fill that slot in Springfield right now.
Can I make a motion before he changes his mind?
So. I guess I have a selfish reason for. Asking you about planning commission instead of alternate for zoning hearings. I had a discussion with our chairman, Tim Stoff, you know, Tim.
I used to live with him, yeah. He and I were together about fifteen years.
Did he talk to you about this at all?
He has not, no, I thought I talked to him months or probably years ago when he first joined. Here.
So. He's he's currently our chairman. I had a discussion, I I mean, I asked him to. Join the planning commission a few years back. I. I knew Tim from church and so we had a discussion about it, but I ran into him in church over Christmas time. And I asked him how things were going and he said that he is going. To Philadelphia two to three days a week. And he's finding it hard to get to meetings. For the planning commission. And I asked him if that's something that he wanted some help with. And. We were supposed to get together after the holidays and discuss. What his long term goals were, but. I got the feeling that he would not be terribly upset if I happened to find somebody who was qualified to replace him. I hope, Tim, if you're listening or there's somewhere you're mad at me, but.
Yeah, I'm sure Tim did a nice job of your place. His his background as a planner.
So. That's why I was gonna suggest that we hold off on on the resolution. To see where Tim stands and to see if we actually do have a hope.
Okay, but it also, his turn, he's only, he's filling me that. Non expired term that ends January. So.
Still a return, we still have got, he's got twelve months.
So. He decides.
I've been keepers talking about. Media. Yeah, because.
I think.
My understanding is he's missed quite a number of. Planning mission meetings.
He's missed some. I don't want to say quite because I think that would be a little bit of a stretch. So he missed the first one in in January. He was out the meeting with HRG. The contact required to.
And that's that's what he relayed to me, but. He was having a hard time finding the time to be able to be here when he needed to be.
Are we receiving?
No, not yet. That's what I said. If we just, we held off until the next meeting, didn't get a chance to talk to him. Then we can. Have a further discussion.
Well. Approving this resolution would not preclude any of that, though.
That is correct.
Well, we were just putting on the hearing. And then if he was being promoted.
And there's no problem.
Planning meets the third Thursday, zoning meets the first Thursday.
Correct.
Correct. Either of those, I mean, that way you can't vote at the same time, so. Well, it's interesting because I know. He's an alternate, so I don't know. An alternate. I don't know if anybody explained it to you. But the alternate, okay. You know, yeah, you sit. You can discuss, but you don't vote and but you can be seated if there's not, maybe four.
So we can vote on the resolution now and then, uh, if that position is open and you would like to switch, then you could resign the position on zoning hearing board and that thing, this consensus I'm seeing here is
Welcome.
Welcome.
Don't let anyone ever get away. I move for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. Appointing Brian Kaufman as an alternate to the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for stepping up.
There is a zoning hearing board next Thursday. Six o'clock.
Any items on the, uh, all the business listing that we wanna vote on? Through the agenda. That what we have to do. I saw your discussion back and forth and, and I think you confused me even more than
Well, probably the best thing is, Dom brought up a good point. Probably the only thing to do is just list them on the agenda. And keep them on through your jungle and take them on. That way you'll
All right. So we leave them alone for tonight.
Can we make sure that we get in the minutes that Don had a good point?
All right. Since we're leaving them where they are. Maybe you're